Okay, good morning. My call this morning is meeting the order and first thing on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
Got a motion by Jim, second by Grant, the birthday boy, um, second. All in favor?
Aye.
And there any citizens that called in?
Uh, no, it's clear none of them called in.
Okay. Approval of the minutes, we got two sets of minutes there, September 1st to September the 8th.
Move approval.
Second.
We got a motion by Kevin, second by Grant, to approve the minutes from September 1st to September the 8th. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Payment of bills, the vouchers.
Move approval.
Second. Motion by Jim, second by Kevin, to approve the bills, the vouchers, all in favor?
Aye.
And with that, we're going on to flu shot awareness. Cheryl, you taking care of that or is Kathy doing that? Cheryl? Yes?
All right, it's a great way to start off the first day of fall since we know influenza vaccine is just around the corner.
We should have done this at the end of the meeting in case some of us faint.
Kathy, would you please come up here just in case I'm not fainting? I'm still not there and can't see you either. Who would like to go first?
I volunteer.
Okay.
What a hero.
Basky, that's enough of you.
Peanut gallery. The peanut gallery.
I can always smile.
Any Tito's in this?
Keep the arm relaxed.
As Cheryl is providing the shots, I'd like to just let the public know that the influenza vaccine is, it's always important every year, but it's very important this year because we all have two circulating viruses. We'll have influenza and then we'll also have the coronavirus circulating at the same time. So it's, we're really recommending that people that haven't ever received a flu shot, be sure this is the year you get the flu shot. You definitely do not want to get the coronavirus along with the influenza. That would be a double whammy, so it'd be pretty detrimental to your health. So the influenza virus will protect you, the influenza vaccine, excuse me, will protect you from the worst strain of influenza. So we're highly recommending people get it. Now is a good time. We're starting this month just because it's a good time to start earlier before the coronavirus vaccine is available.
Okay. We can probably start the update by something there too. Frank?
Thank you.
We can probably start the update too.
I was just.
Okay. Okay, while that's going on, we'll do the flu, excuse me, the COVID-19 update by Kathy McKay and Jamie.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Please don't cry when you get your flu shot.
I am somber, glad I could be here.
So we'll, I believe you all have the numbers of our current cases. The new total for Minnesota's is 90,000, 942. That is up 937 from yesterday. Sunday's total was the new one-day record high in Minnesota. And then our Clay County numbers, we have 1,281 positive cases. We're still at 40 deaths, so we haven't had any additional deaths for a number of weeks. And then we have three hospitalizations across the state. There's a number of other hospitalizations, but nothing significant as far as the healthcare systems are able to handle all of the hospitalizations from COVID. And so you'll see our case numbers, our positive confirmed cases are rising. This was expected to increase, of course, with the higher ed coming back into our community, all the students, and then we're seeing a number of cases in our K-12 schools as well. So the unfortunate thing is most of the, what they're seeing actually even across the state and we're seeing here, is the reluctance of people. And it's COVID-positive adults or parents of COVID-positive children, they're reluctant to share the information. Our case investigators are noticing that, as well as the schools are noticing that they're not wanting to share even the kids that are exposed to positive cases because it means that they have to be quarantined and they have to be out of school. And that's a hardship for parents. So we understand why they're not willing to share that, but it does make it harder for Minnesotans because it boosts the COVID spread to others in the school, your athletic teams, your churches, your workplaces, and some people will be at higher risk for complications. So, and you know, we're all not wanting to deal with the disruptions of COVID, but we need to make sure that we follow our individual responsibility. And that is if you are positive, you stay home for 10 days until your symptoms, unless your symptoms don't resolve within that time. If you're contact of a positive, you need to quarantine, and that's 14 days. And you can't test out of quarantine. So we've had some people say, well, I'll go get tested on day seven. If I'm negative, then I can go back to my usual work and/or school, and you can't do that. If you're a contact of a positive, you have to quarantine for 14 days. Regardless if you get tested on day seven and you're negative, you really still must maintain that quarantine because that's the time period where you'll become symptomatic. So we want to make sure that people understand that, that it is our responsibility, all of us, to follow the guidelines to slow this spread and stop this from circulating. We all have that responsibility. So wearing your mask, make sure you follow the guidelines for quarantining, and if you're positive, and please let our case investigators know, if we don't know who the contacts are, we can't follow up with those individuals.
We got the sheriffs ready for you.
Yeah. Want to set up here? Yeah, sure.
Now would someone watch so the sheriff does not fall over when he gets his shot? No crying, whining, or fussing?
You better do a good job, he's got a gun.
Cheryl, don't use that used needle on him.
I have to use it a lot, of course. I gotta get all the way up here. If we can't get far enough, we might have to wait.
It's, he's.
It's close, but I don't want you to cut your arm off. It'll be. Okay.
Don't look at it.
Be nice now Cheryl, be nice.
You'll keel over, buddy.
It's the same treatment. You did? When I put a Band-Aid on, see my dirty blood on that white shirt? It would be.
Good job.
It would ruin my reputation as well.
Thank you all for doing your part and getting your influenza vaccine.
So do we, uh?
Oh, you did, okay.
Do we notify our own?
Well, happen is it will go into our Minnesota Immunization Registry and then all of our healthcare systems have access to that.
Okay, so it'll let you eventually get it downloaded to my care provider.
Yep. Absolutely.
But just make sure you tell them so they don't give you a second one in case they haven't looked at that.
What would happen if you get a second one?
Well, nothing, but we don't want to waste the doses on getting a second dose.
So just out of curiosity, how many people here had to take the old people one?
Oh Cheryl, you can't share that because of HIPAA.
Oh, you can't? Let me guess, one, two, three.
Beanie, beanie, money, mo.
Look that on your own.
It's easier to ask how many didn't have.
I think this would be Commissioner Wayland's.
I can count to four and I can count to two.
This is Commissioner Wayland's best birthday present, is getting influenza shots.
Hey, children, you won't forget this for us.
Oh, no.
Not on TV.
You're gonna have to replicate that Cheryl.
Too late, we already got the shots.
But you can replicate it, right?
I guess we do, I guess we do get a second one.
Without using the needle, I don't know if I get it because they're all pretty close to this.
They might not be, maybe they're here for another deal too.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Commissioners for doing your part.
I'm always happy to call people.
Thank you.
And the sheriff as well for doing his part.
Does she also how they say, do you have any upcoming flu clinics or? I am still waiting on my state vaccine, Minnesota vaccine for children and that, and we do have more vaccine coming the first week of October. And so as soon as I have enough of that, I'm opening up a plenty for all of our campus employees. Thank you all.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you.
Okay, now from the entertainment part with the regular meeting again.
And I know, I went over those numbers as you were all getting your vaccine, so I'm not sure if you have questions on those. We're working, we're still working with K-12 schools and we're meeting every week to discuss their learning model, and we're also working with higher ed. We have weekly calls with them as well. We are looking at a testing, community testing. We're working on that information and we'll get that out to the community once we verify with the Minnesota Department of Health. It is looking like next week we'll have an open community testing and we'll get the flyers out and the information out so people can come to those, that testing site. It will be three days and I think, or is it four days? Is it three days, right? Three days, 600 tests a day. So there's a, we'll send a link for people to register for that site. It will be free to anyone that wants to get tested at that community testing site. So more information, we have a meeting tomorrow with Minnesota Department of Health to confirm and finalize those plans.
Can you talk a little bit about, we discussed this briefly yesterday, the door-to-door voluntary testing. I know there's some misinformation out there and there's some people that are questionable, are questioning it, so if you could update that, that'd be great. Okay, Kathy did ask me to talk about that, so I will, but if you have some specific things, then we can talk about that too. But so, but before I move on to that, I just want to support what Kathy talked about, that when a person does go and get tested, they need to stay home. And so we are seeing that throughout the community when we're working with work sites in our K-12 and our schools, that people are identified, they get their test results, and that goes back for 48 hours for their contact. So as an example, if they get their test results on Wednesday, if they were at work or at school, and Monday and Tuesday, those are contacts. If they haven't been six feet from them. So it's a lot more work to track through who could have potentially been exposed and who would need to quarantine. So just a reminder that if you are tested, and most often it's people that are not symptomatic, but they go get tested and then it ends up being that there's exposure in the workplace. And so just a reminder of that. And then also if you do go to that testing site in the community, it would be the same thing, you need to wait for your results before you would go back to work or school. So then on to CASPER. So CASPER is the Community Assessment for Public Health Emergency Response, and it's a push across the state of Minnesota right now. It's a model that CDC uses and Minnesota Department of Health to kind of boots-on-the-ground find out what's going on in the community. So in this case, they're looking at, they've actually targeted 180 sites across the state, and they are providing an opportunity, it's completely voluntary, they're not contacting you in advance to see if you want to participate, but what they're trying to do is they're doing a test for COVID, they're also doing the antibody testing, and then one person of the household will complete a survey so they can gather information. The goal of this project that Minnesota Department of Health is implementing started on September 15th going through the end of this month across Minnesota is to understand how COVID has spread in Minnesota communities, to understand what caused COVID to spread in certain communities, to explore how COVID's transmission and infection rates differ among regions in Minnesota, to identify the percentage of people infected with COVID that have no symptoms, and to improve health messaging. So it basically, it's a team of public health professionals, there is a healthcare person that is employed by Minnesota Department of Health to do the testing. Their vehicles identify that they are the COVID-19 testing team by magnets on the side of their vehicle. Again, they don't notify you in advance, so they will knock on your door and ask if you're willing to participate in this survey. It is completely voluntary, as I said, and it really is giving people in the community an opportunity to ask questions, to talk about how COVID has impacted their families, and also to give them information, to provide education as well. Just some kind of benefits for why people would participate in this survey. Again, really giving them an opportunity to speak directly with health professionals in the community and share their thoughts, their concerns, and also to, an opportunity for the testing. It is free, it's confidential, and voluntary. Okay, Commissioner Rajo, any questions?
I think it's just hard for people to understand how that's the safe alternative to get tested, right? If you have somebody going door-to-door, and I think there's a lot of questions behind it, and so just to make sure that we're getting all of the information out is important.
Okay. So basically, they're showing up, you know, with proper PPE, you know, I guess, I think of it like home care, you know, home care professionals come to your home all the time. The, you know, whether we do that at the Armory or we do that in your home, it's a safe and effective way of testing.
And it runs through the 30th if I'm not mistaken, so September 30th, there's an end date to it, so.
All right, thank you for that info.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Okay, thanks for the update again. And with that, we'll go into the CARES Act Committee update of County Administrator Steve Larson, and Darren's here too, yes.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. It has been another extremely busy week as far as our CARES Committee and CARES work has gone, whether we're in committee or working on a variety of different things throughout. You can tell from the agenda today that we continue to work hard on that. Just in our CARES update, we'll cover a number of things that we've addressed during our committee as a part of the agenda today, but the first portion, you provided your handout with the CARES funding, and I'll turn that over to Darren, and after that, we have Mark Sloan that will come up and provide us an update on our Phase 1 and 2 business relief plans and also our long-term care grants. So Darren.
So, thanks Steve. The chart that Steve handed out this morning is the one that you've gotten weekly now, and what I've done is based on the CARES Act Committee's recommendations, I have put in the things that are on the board agenda today so that we can get an accurate update of what the spending is going to be for each one of those six categories. This chart represents money that'll be spent or has been projected to be spent if everything is approved today. This chart, as you remember, last week we shifted some funds from the small business to the community resiliency, so this does reflect that as well. And I've also added the actual costs, we got some more specific costs on the two items that are on the board agenda today, the DMV relocation and the remodel of the multi-purpose community meeting room. And so that, this chart reflects those numbers in there as well. So at this point, it doesn't represent the adjustment of funds from one category to another, if we have to do that, as you probably see, county infrastructure is a little bit over budget with what we're seeing, and I believe that the CARES Act Committee will be discussing that in the future meetings that we have on how we're going to adjust those funds. Much of the public health funding will be spent once the state comes out with more guidance on vaccinations and storage requirements for the vaccinations, so that's why you see that at this point, the public health outreach and service hasn't, there hasn't been a lot spent in that area right now, but that will probably go up as we get closer to a vaccine. And this chart does contain the public health salaries from March through November, and that is under the county reimbursement for COVID-19 response. So that is also included in this chart. We do have some other pending requests from the veteran services, social services and corrections, but that will come to you next weekend, uh, next board meeting, I believe. So other than that, if there is no other questions? For me?
Thank you again for doing this. It's very helpful as we move forward to evaluate the requests.
Certainly. So I will shift it over to Mark. He is kind of working the Phase 2 of the small business loans. As you know, we're going into a more targeted for the remaining money that is going to go out for small businesses.
Grants.
And Mark has been.
Grants, not loans.
Grants, yeah, I keep saying.
It's not, it's okay.
Sorry about that. Yeah, it's not a loan, it's a grant.
It's a grant. So let me recap just a little bit where we're at. We set aside significant amount of funds for direct relief to small businesses in Clay County. In August, we launched a program to solicit applications for businesses, and Morehead had a similar program inside Morehead, and we ran ours outside of Morehead for the rest of the county, and that was, we were targeting businesses of 20 or fewer employees, sole proprietorships, nonprofits, things like that. Last week, we were here and you approved the distribution of funds to those organizations, so Thursday, we sent out 124 emails to those organizations that were going to receive funds, which equates to just under $1 million of direct relief to businesses in our county. Those businesses now have a couple of forms they need to fill out, and once those are all turned in, we hope to be able to actually send them checks right on or about this October 1st is our target date for that. So that process is taking place right now, so if anybody's watching this and you're one of those recipients, please complete your paperwork and get it back to us. Out of the 124, we got what, 30 responded so far, so there's a bunch that we hope will come in yet this week. We had some funds remaining, so the committee had determined that we would move to a round two of grants, and those grants will be targeted specifically to that next tier up of businesses, 20 to 50 employees. It'll be a similar process, we'll have an application process, and once the application process closes, then we'll have, we'll review those, make sure they qualify, and then we'll have them fill out some paperwork to get those funds. Those businesses will also be in, we're hoping to be up to $10,000 for each of those businesses, and we hope that program will start about the same timeframe. We're hoping, right now we're pushing for October 1st would be the launch of that for applications. And we'll try to keep everybody informed as we get closer to that. We're working on the pieces we need to make that happen. Simultaneously, we, the committee identified that elder care facilities had been adversely impacted by COVID and have set aside funds specifically to support them. We will be reaching out to them individually in the next few weeks, asking them to complete some paperwork, and we'll be distributing up to $25,000 to each of those. That will happen hopefully about the same time as Round 2. So we're trying our best to get this money out as quickly as we can so that we can get the support to these organizations and businesses that really need it. So that's what we're really trying to do.
Just also as a note, you want to talk about they have to notarize that page?
Right, yes. Yeah, when the qualified recipients of any of these grants have to have affidavit that has to be signed for them to receive the funds, and that affidavit has to be notarized. Notaries are available at any bank or law office, or also here. If you can't find a notary, come to the courthouse, we'll, we have some on, we can get it done here, so.
All right, any other questions for Mark and myself or Steve?
I think Phase 2, as you described it, Phase 1, the county's portion was for rural Clay County. Phase 2 is for all of Clay County.
Yeah, yeah, I missed that, but yes, we'll do all of Clay County, all businesses, 20 to 50 that were adversely impacted by COVID.
And as you can see from Darren's graph, there's some dollars remaining in both the small business and community resiliency cash pools, and so we were very, we wanted to make sure that all of the dollars in those categories went to as many different areas as possible within the county. Part of what, the discrepancy in the cash of up to $10,000 for the smaller businesses and the nursing homes, up to $25,000, is that the major talking point from all of the huge cases nationwide has been our long-term care facilities. And because of the employees that they had, they were excluded from the first round of the grant program, and so it was really important that we get a large amount of the grant to those facilities in Clay County as we know they were hardest hit. And another piece is that we have all of their registrations, are required to register with the state, so we have their addresses and contact information, so we will be able to make sure that we reach out to all of them individually.
Right, yep, and we'll do that directly to them.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
About the other end of the spectrum for the childcare providers, what did that fall under? Was that under community resiliency?
Those were, those were in the small business category.
Okay.
The smaller ones were able to apply with the first round. We excluded home-based business but did include home-based daycares. That was important to us because we knew that was an area that struggled as well, so that was in the small business category. And going forward, the larger daycares, if they qualify for the employee equivalents, they will follow in that as well.
For the next one.
Very good.
Yeah.
I know we stressed last week on documentation. Does that documentation have to be submitted, or do they just hang on to that documentation?
No, it has to be submitted to us.
And that is, the one that has to be notarized, or?
Correct.
Affidavit, correct.
Yep, there's an affidavit they have to submit to us along with a W-9, and we provide those forms for them to fill out, and they either can email them back or physically mail them back or bring them in. We've had a few actually walk them right in the building, so whichever way they can get them to us is good.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Just a clarification on the community resiliency, the 388,000 showing spent there, we do have to add the $550,000 that will be going out to the long-term care facilities. That comes out of community resiliency. So the actual number that we've already approved there is about 938,000, not the 388,000. Well, we're still well within our target area for that group, and we will need to shift a little bit of funds around to cover where we've exceeded the county infrastructure one, but what this chart does not show too is I think we That comes out of community resiliency. So the, so the actual number that we've already approved there is about 938,000, not the 388,000. Well, we're still well within our target area for, for that group, and we will need to shift a little bit of funds around to cover where we've exceeded the county infrastructure one. But what this chart, chart does not show too is I think we, Commissioner Mojo can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we have about $257,000 that we had not put into any of these categories. So we, we have that little bit of a cushion as well, so. So far, we're meeting all of the needs that have been presented to us, so.
I know I reported on this last week, but for anyone watching, the banks in Morehead are offering drive-through notary services to sign those affidavits, so to reduce the contact as well. So if you, if it's convenient to run into Morehead or do that, that may be an option as well.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, we're gonna go to the approval process for the CARES funding for cities and townships with under 200 people. Our County Administrator, Steve Larson?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. As part of our sixth category approach to spending CARES dollars, one of those categories dealt with is under the category of small communities. The state provided funding to the county directly, but they also provided $86,161 to cities and townships that are under 200 citizens. And so we have a, we have about 17, 13 townships and four cities that qualify for that within Clay County. And over the last couple of weeks, we began to receive different requests from, from those townships and, and cities. The request before you this morning would be to, to allow the coronavirus committee to approve the request without bringing them before the board. This board would approve, approve the payment based on, based on your bills and voucher statement each, each week. And so that would, they're not, they, they are required to, to request of us funds. They don't automatically get the funds. On the back of your document, you should have what, a layout of what they're eligible for. Our cities and townships have until November 15th to make the, make the request and the approval. And so our request to you this morning would be allowing the coronavirus committee to, to evaluate those requests, approve them, and then have them come through on, on bills and vouchers. If that, I'll turn it over for any questions.
I might add too that, that one of the things that we have been recommending to these townships is if they, if they do not have the qualifying expenditures themselves within their own entities, that they have the ability to transfer those funds to the school district that's within their township, or for example, they may choose to offer to their emergency services departments, whether it's fire, you know, ambulance or whatever, so. So there's some options for them to use those funds, so.
Mr. Chair, if I may, thank you. I will also say that we have had some requests from some of these townships, and they are definitely qualifying expenditures. We've had some conversations as to how townships could, could use this. I know for their town halls, that's important if they need to get it up to speed for voting or community events. So I, I definitely would encourage this board to allow the coronavirus committee to weigh which, which requests would get paid, but as you see, the total's 86,161.
Yeah, the thing is, we're not gonna wait, we'll meet for another two weeks. We need some of these requests to get approved, so.
I'd move forward, move with the request.
Second.
You've got a motion by Kevin Second by Grant to forward the request, the $86,161. Is there any way to distribute that because we're not going through the council? All in favor, oh, excuse me, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Okay, motion passes, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Then we'll go on to the next thing, we're consider action on the motor vehicle negotiation based on information brought forward by our County Administrator.
Now, thank you, Mr. Chair. On September 1st, this board approved the County Administrator to enter into possible negotiations that, if the committee would bring forth a recommendation from the variety of locations that we, we looked at to relocate our motor vehicle. I think when our, our committee looked at, this is, is, is a real issue. Certainly, social distancing has provided a challenge for our current motor vehicle site. Our waiting room is right around 800 square feet, and at any given morning, if you go out to our DMV, we may have 20, 20 to 30 people waiting to get into the facility. Because of social distancing, we had to make those adjustments to not utilize the site. We only allow one or two people into the facility prior to entering to their, their window, and so we are having citizens wait in either outside or in their vehicle. While that is somewhat worked during, during the spring and summer, we know that it won't be too long, and that will be very challenging to have people waiting outside for an hour and a half to two hours while, before they're able to get in. I would note that for the, for the commissioners that we did initially look at, at the existing motor vehicle building to see if there's different things that we could do with that facility as far as an expansion. And what we came to the conclusion was, based on the cost and the time challenges that we had with being able to spend the, the funding, it just was not a feasible option. The committee did look at a variety of different locations, both in, in Morehead. We also reached out to our, our local cities, that if they had a building that met the, the criteria, that we would also consider that. There is one property, I think, that stood out for our committee pretty clearly. We were looking for a building that, that had square footage to allow for our social distancing with the, with the ability to have 30 to 40, 40 citizens present. Because we, as I mentioned, it's very common for us to have, we open at eight o'clock, and it's very common for us to, to have people waiting out at as early as 7:30 to get in. We wanted to, to see if we could look at having a site that would alleviate that issue also. So the proposal that I'm bringing forward to you today, you should have a handout at your desk, would be an 8,800 square foot location in the Morehead Center Mall. If you're familiar with that, it would be a portion of the furniture for less, furniture for less location. From a, from a cost standpoint, we would be looking at, we would be looking at $12 a square foot, which equates to $105,600 per year. We would be looking to, to sign a three-year lease with an option for an additional two years, with the understanding, we, we went into our discussions on this, looking for a shorter-term lease, but due to the policies of, of, of the mall, we, three years was as low as they would be willing to go. There would be a setup or build-out in this location of roughly $216,000. We would go from having nine windows to an 11-window facility with a kiosk, so our staff could meet our citizens at the door in hopes of ensuring they had the proper, proper paperwork, so they don't have to wait for that period of time only to be asked to come back. One of the things that we really liked about this property was we have county, because of our relationship with the city, we have, we have county and fiber technology that are running to the Morehead Center Mall already. And so while we'll certainly have some cabling and signage that we'll have to spend of an additional $35,000, we'll save a considerable amount of money with having to bring that, that fiber to, to the building. And so the, the benefit too is also the, the Morehead Center Mall opens up at 7:30 in the morning, which will allow our citizens to, to enter into the facility and get in line and social distance in, in warm and, and not wet environment. And so we, the request before you today would be enter into a three-year, three-year contract. We are looking for, from you for a commitment of, of 500, let's see, $568,300. That would include the, the cost of the, the three-year lease. We are hoping that, that we would ideally be able to take possession of, of the location on November 12th and 13th. Our motor vehicle has to be closed those days because of the changeover in the state technology. The MinLars system will be phased out, and the new system will be put in during those times. So that's our target date, and we can't guarantee that that, that will happen, but that's what, what we would be, what would be, be shooting for. And again, your approval would be pending any, any legal review of the contract. Currently, we're working on that, but not being, being that we're not meeting for two weeks, we wanted to bring that forward, so your approval today would allow, allow the Morehead Center Mall to pull permits, so they could get, get working on the bill, the build-out, so. With that, I will turn that over for any comments or questions.
Yes, Chair?
Yes.
As part of the coronavirus committee, it was very important to Commissioner Campbell and I that we address this issue on, on the top of the list. And it's, if you drive by that place, there is a line of people outside, and I've heard countless complaints about the, just the setup wasn't right. People are going to Holly to get their licenses, or Detroit Lakes, and it really was an issue that we had to address, and it, the COVID-19 has really made it almost impossible to do business up there. And so we worked really hard to find a suitable location within Clay County to relocate, and it, it's taken a few weeks to find that, probably six weeks to find that. And so to allow us to relocate for a period of at least three years, maybe five, within the heart of Morehead, I think is really important to do, and, and this fits exactly what the need is. It allows for the safety of our employees and the public, and I'm, I'm really excited about this.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Thank you. In addition, one of the, there's some side benefits there, I think, for the, for the mall and some of the businesses there, is the fact that, that these people will now be able to be in, in an area where there's other businesses that are open, and while they're waiting, they can do business with other businesses within the mall. I see it as a plus for that mall to have additional traffic in there. That's, there's nothing wrong with that. If you recall back before COVID hit, our administrator and staff had been presenting to us, and, and those of you on the building committee, a long-term plan. And part of that long-term plan had a future, at some point, someday realized that this building here will probably be entirely for the courts, and, which would need then a, a different facility for administration. And as part of that planning, the plan would have been to move DMV to that new location. That's, at least that was, has been the proposals here. The nice thing about, and of course, now with COVID and with a lot of, there's a lot of changes that we're, we might be looking at in terms of long-term bricks and mortar. But with that, this, this lease gives us time to, for this board to determine what, what more in the long-term goals we might have for that. The, one of the things that we heard from Laurie Johnson, who oversees the DMV, is that if we move them out of there, they don't want to go back. And I, you know, and I think that would, rightfully so. I think that they're outgrowing that. The lines are also, because there's a lot of, a lot, we're, we're growing as a county, and there's a lot more vehicles that are going on, and so the demands of that are only going to increase. One positive thing that, that's going to go on, and hopefully when they replace this MinLars with a new software program, hopefully we're going to maybe see some improvements to that whole process for the benefit of our citizens. But I want to just say one final thing, and that is the, I just, I just couldn't see us having to have these people waiting outside when it's 20 below because they can't come in there. And, and I think this facility, and according to what we're talking about here, I think it would allow for 35 people social distance within the area. And then the nice thing about that is there's also, there's also all the common areas out in the mall, which allow, you know, if we had to, we could give them those little deals where they're allowed to walk around, and the little blinker light would come off, and they would come back, but. So there's a lot of opportunities there, and this space would also allow us to possibly look at subletting a portion of that space to the state of Minnesota for their testing services, because right now, we also need to realize that this proposal is for the county's DMV, not for the state licensing. That's a separate division. That, right now, is intended to stay where it's at, because this, this piece does not include that. But we have the ability potentially to sublet to them. We've made sure that we had that as part of the contract, right, Steve?
That's correct.
That if, if the state of Minnesota decides they want to follow us to the mall, we will, we will be able to, probably be able to accommodate them within our lease, so. Thank you.
Yeah, I got a question. Are you, you're saying you're going to go from 11, nine windows to 11 windows?
Yes.
Is there anything on there about adding staff in, or what, or do we have enough staff to cover 11 windows?
Well, we, we do have, we have a, there is a request in the 2021 budget to, to address one of those positions. We do have additional staff that work on a part-time basis that are sometimes behind the scenes, that we would be able to bring forward in those times of demand.
Okay.
I think one of the other pieces, and you noted this, is there's been times even I have waited in line for 40 minutes only to get up to the window to realize that I forgot to bring a document. And so to have that kiosk at the main entrance before people get a number, to be able to answer their questions or make sure they have the proper documentation is going to save everybody's time in the end. And, and that is not even close to allowable at the, the space that we have currently at the DMV. The other piece we should probably say is we still have that, that building as an asset, and so we're looking at possible ways to address that space there. We, last week, approved the public health building that will go up on the northern, northwestern part of that property, and if we need to use that as a mass vaccination spot, we could. If we need to relocate solid waste offices to go there, we could. So we're really working, looking at the space needs and working with what we already have as an asset.
And again, I, I do want to say that, you know, this, this whole, this whole proposal is, is based on the needs represented by this current pandemic. This is the real reason for this, because of the social distancing and everything that's being required. Prior to this, you know, we used to, I mean, it was a small space, but we'd cram 20 or 30 or 40 people in there, and they had chairs for them, and you could do that, and, and now you can't. And, and, you know, so part of the, you know, this, this does qualify for the COVID relief dollars that the county has available to them, so I, I think it's good money spent on, as a precaution for COVID, and it's, and it's going to be good for the citizens.
I'll move to approve with the appropriate legal review.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion by Grant, second by Jim, to approve the relocation of the motor vehicle license for total loss of 568,300. Any further discussion?
I, I do want to mention that in the process of all this, I, we did, we had brought this up with Derek LaPointe and...
Dan.
Dan Molly, acting city manager, and at the time, they seemed pretty excited at the fact that something was going to be going on in that mall that can help bring traffic to that mall as well, so.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes. Motion passes. Okay, you're just going to stay there. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The the last one for now would would be for this board to consider a approval of a guaranteed maximum price in a contract with construction engineers for completion of our courthouse multipurpose community meeting space across the hall. When we first met back in September, based on the time time constraint and wanting to bring this forward, construction engineers brought forward an opinion of cost that was provided to this board for their consideration. At that time, it was $250,000 for for the construction and then some additional costs of about $17,000 for for additional safety issues on the third floor. Having got in there and having vendors gone through, getting into the roof, we had a few just a few minor adjustments. The request before you this morning would be approving an additional $12,900, mostly dealing with the the infrastructure of what's happening above the the space there. And so before you, there should be two two handouts that were given provided this morning. I apologize, they weren't ready for the board packets. But we have a proposal letter that has a request of $279,900. And also within that is also a contract that that has been gone through by legal. We did make a couple of requests for changes which were tweaked late yesterday. And so our request would be would be considering this adjustment with the understanding that we now have a more this would be a more solid number based on what we have.
Okay, since we're talking about COVID, you'd be using COVID funds for this. If there's change orders on this, do we? If there's no more COVID funds available, that goes back into our budget then, doesn't it?
Um, they're they're actually starting after this board meeting today. And so the the goal certainly would be is if there's any any concerns, that we would certainly have time to do that. There is also a 10% contingency that's included within this proposal that in the event that we do have some something pop up, that that we'll hopefully be able to address that.
Mr. Chair. You you raise a a good question there, and it's something that I think it's important for the public to know. As we work on this with our CARES Act committee, you know, we have we had received roughly 7.9 million federal dollars that came down through the state to Clay County to use towards COVID-related expenses. And and if a lot of people are thinking we might be jumping the gun and doing these things really quickly, it's because we have to. The state of Minnesota has given us till December 1st to spend the 7.9 million dollars. Now, it does that it doesn't mean we want to just, you know, spend it unwisely, but the fact of the matter is that it whatever we don't spend, we get back to the state of Minnesota, and they're going to do something else with it. And so we're trying to do it the best we can for that can benefit our county citizens. So in regards to if there's if there's additional dollars being needed over the 279, as your question was, there, you know, hopefully, there there are still CARES dollars available that we have a little bit of a cushion in some of these things. But it all needs to be done by December 1st.
Mr. Chair, to speak to the the budget piece, we, as a committee, have a list of items that have been identified as needs, but they're on hold. And part of that is knowing that there are larger projects and or purchases that are in the process. We want to make sure that we're we're within budget or within reason of those before we allow those those on-hold items. And as we talked about earlier, there's about $256,000 that have been unallocated that we're just holding to the side to address possibly those issues. The hope, obviously, is that we don't, but we do enough projects, you know that there will be smaller increases, hopefully, so.
Okay. I'll move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Grant, second by Kevin, to approve the remodeling of the community room. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes.
Mr. Chair, I know we're a little bit behind schedule, but I think it's important, as we have approved the last couple, to really give our thanks to our administrator and the coronavirus committee. This has been a a big project to get these to for action to this board. And and Steve's put a lot of calls in, and we've been to a lot of sites to check things out. So I just my appreciation to you and the staff for the work that you did to get this forward.
Thank you. It's great teamwork.
Okay. Okay, with that, we'll get a motion to go into the public hearing?
Mr. Chair, make a motion to open the public hearing.
Okay, we got a motion by Jenny to open the public hearing?
Second.
Second by Kevin. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. But that, Mr. Empting, do you want to give us a breakdown of?
Is there another hall waiting? I know we should check that.
Mark?
Well, as we move forward with the body camera process here, part of it is through state statutes, we have to have a public hearing and allow a public an opportunity to speak in regards to the equipment that we are looking at, as well as our policy as it relates to the body worn cameras. We have had that information on our county website as well. We've got the our our policy, the equipment, as well as frequently asked questions. We're also supposed to have our public the ability to either write us through email or by letter in regard to their feelings on the body worn cameras. I did get two emails from the public in regards to them. Both are are positive emails. I'll read both of those. One was from Julie with his Earhart. I fully support any technology that protect our police from false accusations. And the second was from Mr. Greg Richards. It's, hi, Mark, I am glad to read that Clay County Sheriff's Department would be purchasing body cameras for all officers. This purchase is something that I think should have taken a taken place a long time ago. Good move for your department and all that work there. Those are the two comments that are received through email. I guess at this point, if there's any public here that is willing or wanting to comment in regards to body worn cameras. I was hoping to have a a camera here to show everyone, but the vendor hasn't got it to us yet. Do you know when it's coming?
I do not, no. I have an email into them. It's supposed to be here before the end of the month so that I can at least test it out and try it, so.
I think it's a great idea. I think if we're going to
Excuse me, could
I'll go ahead. The required issue here, you don't have to change every year if you've got things to replace them. You should have them along with
That was Tom that was Tom Pashkeev.
Okay.
Okay. I don't know if we got his comments or not, if they picked up or not.
Yeah, I'm not sure if they were picked up.
Say it again.
Okay, Tom Pashkeev, Mark Moritz. I think we should have these body cameras long ago, and if we're going to be buying them, I think we should be buying them the best we can on the market for all the officers. It's a great deal, and we really need them.
Thank you, Tom. Anybody else want to speak for against the cameras? Okay. Any other comments from the commissioners?
Well, I just I 100% support the request of the sheriff here. I think that your comments when you originally came to us regarding this were spot on. I I just, you see, right now, what's what goes on, there's so many accusations without the ability to to give proof, positive proof of situations. I I have all the respect for your department, your staff, and police. I think we need to give them the tools to keep the integrity up, I guess is the best way to put it, so.
I guess I agree with you. I get the cameras and all that. I feel sorry for you guys who haven't the when I look at you, you got all that stuff on your vests are ready, and now we're going to put a camera on there too. So I hope your physical be able to do to carry all that. But, so, okay.
Mr. Chair, I I think that Mark is or the sheriff had said this earlier, it's it's a tool, an accountability tool for not only the public, but also our department. And I think we have we have a lot of support within the community for the department, and I think that's because you work really hard to earn that support. And so my my hope is that as this goes forward, that it will be a tool that you're able to use to better the department.
Okay. Anybody else? Any comments?
Steve, did we receive any email comments?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Mojo, I did not receive any other additional emails.
Okay.
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Grant, second by Kevin, to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, we're back in session again, or I guess we still were in session. Do we want to act on that now, or do is there something to act on, or are you already ordered or?
So at this time, no, we haven't ordered them. What we'll do now is that now we'll figure out the funding mechanism and how we're going to make how we're going to get these funded. We did just get our auction taken care of, so we'll look at some of those funds if possible. We'll look at some seizure funds, and then we'll bring that forward to you when we have that available. So at this point, it was just to have the public hearing as part of state statute. So we're covering our bases there. Next, as we will forward, we are working up on them, and then that I'll work with Lori Johnson and Josh on that.
Do you have any projected date when you plan on implementing this, Sheriff?
Yeah, it would be nice to have this by the end of the year. I think with with some of our seizure funds and some auction funds with your approval, I think we will be able to to have that that accomplished.
Mr. Chair, I I I do want to suggest, one of the things working on this CARES committee that we found in today's day and age, that the longer you wait, the less the supply might be. I I would I would strongly suggest that we authorize him to, if he knows what he wants, to get that order in, and we will work with where the money is going to come from throughout our budget process and and with whatever revenues you might raise. But I just I don't I don't think we should be waiting to order those cameras. I think we should give the sheriff the authority to do that now, and I would so move that.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we got a motion by Kevin, second by Grant, to allow Sheriff Empting to move forward with the camera purchase. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I believe you gave us Sheriff an estimate. Was it 38 or?
It's what, 40?
It's $40,000.
Okay, so I maybe if it suits the board to include in that motion up to $50,000 for purchases?
That's fine.
Okay. As a motion has amended up to 50,000. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Okay, I want to thank the two people who responded, let us forward for you to read and to Tom, we're coming forward. Glad to see citizens be involved in this process, so thank you very much.
Yes, thank you as well, and also thank you to the citizens that did respond, so we appreciate it. We also appreciate your support. Thank you.
But I I would highly suggest you get on that right away. This
I'll get it done.
Yeah, probably done today.
Okay.
Thank you.
You bet. Okay, Joe, you're all set to talk to us about a three-year contact for snow removal. You're going to use that mic, stay close to it.
This one here? Okay. Good morning. I'm coming to you today to request to advertise for three-year snow contract removal. I think I guess Tom, you're here, so that's good you're here. They have got some work that they're doing, so he's indicated to me that that he'll be stepping down for the for this. So anyway, so given right now, I'd like to advertise, go out for request for quotes to come in. Deadline would be run the ad on a September 28th, and then run that for two weeks, and then I would open bids or open quotes at the October 20th meeting, and then hopefully award on the 27th of October. So a little late in the season, but I think we we got some interest in this, so I think it'll be fine.
It's still before the snow, huh?
Yeah, yeah. I, Tom said he would help out if we, you know, in between now and then, we get a blast. So we got that covered there too, so.
Okay.
I'll move to approve opening for bids.
Second motion.
Okay, we got a motion by Grant, second by Jenny, to advertise for bits. Any further discussion?
So if I can, Mr. Chair, so the the advertisement, there's there's typical snow removal, and there's snow hauling. Is there is there going to be something in there that's going to distinguish how much we pay for the equipment here than how much for the truck hauling?
Yep. So what I'll do is I'll I'm going to send out a bit or a packet, quote packet, where I'll be requesting information about, you know, what their inventory is, how many trucks they have, and what they charge per hour per equipment.
Okay.
So we'll build and that's how we had done it in the past.
Well, I, you know, and I I want to thank Tom and and Key for their their years of providing that service here. It's been top quality, and we've never recall us having an issue when it came to snow removal. We were one of the first ones always done, so.
But I just just to jump back off that, he, Tom has been somebody that I I haven't had to call much just because of this. He just gets it done. They definitely have set the standard for the transition. I mean, we transitioned from the small campus to the big campus, and he didn't miss a beat. And so I do want to thank Tom for that, and appreciate his work.
Okay. All right, we did have a motion on that, right? Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Post. We got to move forward with that.
Thank you.
Okay, that will go up to update on the budget preliminary levy. Steve's back again along with Lori.
Good morning again, Mr. Chair. Before you this morning, you have resolution 20 dash 28. This resolution would set the maximum levy amount that could be assessed to our citizens here in Clay County for 2021. It would also allow Lori to to certify the budget per state statute.
The levy?
Excuse me.
The levy?
The levy, yes. And so we would appreciate that. And it's also important to understand for our citizens at this point that if this were to be certified this morning, our budget will only have the ability to go down and not to to have any additional increases. This resolution will also establish the truth and taxation date. With on the document that you have before you, I think the resolution states that we are going to meet on December 1st. Since the since the board agenda packet came out, AMC canceled our our policy or meet, I guess, our annual conference in December, which would have been that week. And so the request would be to adjust that to December 8th, that best fits the auditor schedule. And so that just just of note, that would be different than what's in your packet.
What those AMC meetings is, is there going to be any virtual meetings during that time, or?
My understanding is they're going to have the annual meeting, and that is all that they're going to they're going to host. So we'll have we can get that information out to all the commissioners.
Okay.
And then just of note, historically, we've also moved moved our our board meeting to that evening, generally at 5:00 or 5:30, with truth and taxation at at 6:00 PM. And so I think we've when we look at our 2021 budget, there's certainly been a great deal of uncertainty based on on the the COVID-19 pandemic. You know, this board has really asked our department heads to continually look at at our 2020 budget, but but certainly wanted to continue as we went through this process evaluating our our needs for each department. So it was no different. So it was no different, no different from 2020 going into 2021. So we brought to you the first budget proposal was right around eleven percent. You sent us back to go much lower than that. Two weeks ago, we came back to you with a, with a net levy proposal of four point nine-nine percent. During our meeting last week, we addressed different, well, we addressed the sales tax information, which allowed us to do some of the mitigation that we proposed through this process. We discussed our levies by categories and addressed possible reasons for some of the increases that, that we saw. And so in resolution twenty dash twenty-one, the preliminary levy number was forty-one million eighty-nine thousand six hundred and seventy-nine dollars. We're proposed to receive three million eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand nine hundred and sixty-one dollars in county program aid, leaving with a certified net levy request before you this morning at thirty-seven million two hundred and ten dollars and seventeen, excuse me, thirty-seven million two hundred and eighteen, two hundred and ten thousand seven hundred and eighteen dollars. And with that, I would view Lori, you're turning over to commissioners for any questions.
Okay, my question is the forty-one million or the thirty-seven, whatever, is that the total money that we spend or is there state aid, federal aid, I mean some federal aid?
Well, there's both state and federal and other dollars. Our budget is close to a hundred million dollars.
Okay, that's what I want to know, what, what our total budget is, but what we, what we levy for is the thirty, it's going to be the forty.
The thirty-seven, thirty-seven million.
Thirty-seven, yeah, that would be the levy. Thirty-seven million is what we're levying. Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Lori or Steve?
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know if it is to be said here later, but I appreciate the fact that we have, you've, I know you've put a lot of work into the budget this year and meeting with department heads and looking at alternative ways to bring that down. I think that in my time on the board, this is probably going to be one of the hardest years for the budget, just in terms of listening to the needs and concerns of what's happened to our citizens because of the pandemic. And, and I think this will have to be a year that we looked really hard on, on some different areas and wave the needs and wants. There are areas that we have to approve new requests, we know that, but I think, you know, as Commissioner Campbell has said before, we're, this may be the year where we set something down and what we approve in December might look a lot different. And that's tricky, it's painful, it's, it's not easy, but that's, I think, probably going to be where we end up. I know from my perspective, we might have to.
I would echo that.
Do we have any action to this resolution? Need a motion on this somewhere.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Grant, second by Jim to approve resolution twenty twenty dash twenty-eight. Any further discussion?
I think two, sorry to keep butting in here, but I think.
That's why we ask.
I think though that this will allow us time to really see what the effects of the pandemic have on our citizens, but also on health services. I know that eight months ago, we didn't even have a remote work policy and now we do and we've really changed how we do business. And I think when we have this final discussion in December, we'll allow our, we'll have had the conversations in the next couple of months to really examine all of those areas.
I, I, I've said this many times, I think property tax is probably one of the most regressive taxes there are. And, and I think, you know, obviously our internal focus, especially since mid-March, has been how, how we conduct business as a county under, under these, this pandemic and under stipulations set forward by higher powers than us. Having said that, I, I really, I am really concerned about our, our homeowners and our businesses who have suffered greatly and the need to try to help them by keeping this levy as low as possible when they're all, when those people are already very financially hard hit in this particular year especially. So, you know, I'm going to support the preliminary levy. I've, I've preached every year that I, that I've, the preliminary levy every time has become the final levy and I've always said why? And I've always asked why? We can't find anything once from September to December where it shouldn't change anything. And this is one year that I'll, I'll vote for this today, but I will not vote for it in December if it doesn't change. So, but I, again, it gives us some opportunities to look and look hard, so.
Any further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Did you need something else, Lori?
I apologize for the late notice on this. There's some CARES Act money that the Secretary of State made available to us and I've got to apply for that, but we also need a resolution from you to give me permission to do that. So I apologize again if you would approve a resolution giving me permission to do that.
Yes, sir. That's what it is.
Is there a dollar amount?
It's fifty-one thousand, but that goes out to the cities as well, so our portion is about twenty-four thousand.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve that.
Second.
Okay, more than likely it'll be resolution twenty, twenty dash twenty-nine possibly.
Yes. We'll also say that I, you know, the way this CARES Act funding has, has changed rapidly. Oftentimes, we're in a meeting at four o'clock on a Wednesday and by Thursday morning it's changed, so don't worry about that. I just appreciate the fact that you've identified there's a funding source and are pursuing that actively.
Okay, we've got a motion to approve the resolution, next resolution, whatever number it'll be, supposedly twenty-nine. All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Okay.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we're going to go into committee reports. Jenny, you going to start us off today?
Thank you. Last week, I attended the Clay County Planning Commission meeting. We had an interim use permit for dirt works in Holly Township or earthworks, excuse me, in Holly Township that was approved. And then we did have discussion on the Clay County Comprehensive Plan. As you know, we've had the opportunity to partner with MetroCOC. They would provide the service to leverage some federal funding dollars as the, I, I think the general consensus for the entire committee is that this is a positive opportunity to get a great study at a reduced price, so we'll move forward in that. We've talked about that committee that will be working on that. We'll also include a county commissioner and then a planning commission member and then other areas as identified. Matt will bring that recommendation forward. We had a CARES Act committee last week. We discussed many of the items that we approved today. I attended the Buffalo Red Watershed District One Watershed One Plan Committee Meeting and also the public hearing, the final public hearing for that One Watershed One Plan. There was not a ton of citizens that called in on that, which was kind of disappointing as the enormous amount of work that has gone forward with that. But I really do feel that they've worked hard to get that launched, so I'm excited that that is wrapping up. Last week, I attended AMC Natural Resources and Environmental Policy Committee Meetings on, I think it was Wednesday and Thursday or Thursday, Thursday and Friday, I think. Good information on our policy platforms that we want to move forward. I think it's, they're doing the best they can in COVID, but it is really hard to have a discussion with eighty-seven counties on Zoom. Like I said, they're doing a great job, but that's kind of difficult. I had the MetroCOC Policy Committee Meeting, good information covered there. There's several studies going on in the community. Their MetroCOC page has some areas for citizen input, so I encourage anyone to sign into that and we also discussed the Clay County Comp Plan there. I also then attended the CARES Act Committee yesterday. We continue to work on a variety of areas. One area that I know this board has been very vocal about needing to support is we will be bringing forward a recommendation to this board to allot up to twenty-five thousand dollars for our Veterans Service Office to provide need areas for veterans in Clay County. And that will come out of the resiliency, community resiliency pot of money. And I think that Kurt really has a handle on where the needs areas with that group of people are. And I think that to support our veterans right now is really important. So that will be the first meeting we have in October, I believe. And I think that's it, unless I missed.
Kevin?
Oh, excuse me.
I think that's it. I don't know. It's been a crazy.
You're still thinking.
Yeah, it might take longer, but thank you.
On the September sixteenth, we had a CARES Act Committee Meeting. Actually, on Tuesday after, Tuesday, we, Commissioner Wayland and I and Steve, we met regarding some small, solid waste, regarding business drop-offs at our landfill and, and try to, we're trying to come up with a process for how that can look in the future. There we've, we've had some businesses who have expressed some concern about the ability to use the landfill. We had reschedule, we had to schedule another meeting with, with those business people for yesterday afternoon and we had to, at the last minute, cancel that just to be on the safe side of things with COVID, to be rescheduled as soon as possible. Then, then on the sixteenth, the CARES Act. And most of those items that we discussed are, are going to be dealt with today. We do have a couple of other things that we're looking at doing that some of our external agencies that we still fund here, we're looking at, could some of those dollars in the, in the additional requests that they made for 2021 because of COVID be transferred from our budget to qualify with COVID dollars? There's not a lot of dollars there, but there are some that, that we're going to probably be looking at doing that. Then on the twenty-first, yesterday in the morning, I had an executive diversion authority meeting. Several items were discussed. There's going to be some upcoming visits by Colonel Jansen. There's a North Dakota State Water Commission meeting that's coming up. One of the things that they talked about that was public here recently is that the Clomar has now been approved, a new Clomar, so that does give us our boundaries and where the, where the benefits are and where the impacts are more clearly defined. Just for the people of Clay County and the citizens of Moorhead, once this project is done, there would be roughly eight hundred homes in Moorhead that would be taken out of the flood plain and no longer have to have flood insurance as a result of this project. That's eight hundred more than have already been done through the current work. Then on the twenty-first, we had another CARES Act meeting and Commissioner Mojo has gone over that quite well. So I guess I don't really have any more to add to that. And that concludes my report.
Mr. Chair, I did forget something.
You did think so.
I did think a little bit, sorry. This isn't a committee meeting, but I did have several discussions with members of our staff, but also members of the public in terms of the county's stance on social distancing and masks. And I know concerns as now we've opened the courthouse up for people voting. Our voting staff that are working those polls have been instructed by our public health to set up the facility the way it is. And so we are listening to what the recommendations are for public staff to make sure that they're socially distanced and keeping everyone safe. So I appreciate the fact that there's concerns. I am also appreciative of our staff for listening. On the flip side, I think last week I asked our administrator to talk a little bit about what Clay County's plans in, in terms of as we see our numbers increase, maybe having some folks move back to remote work. I know that you're having a meeting after this to discuss that. Concerns have been brought forward to me on staff members that maybe aren't following the recommendations. And I think that while it's, it's, it may seem tedious and we are operating under what public health has told, told us to do in terms of wearing masks. So if you can just work with HR on that to maybe set, send another email blast out on what our policy is on that, I would appreciate it.
We'll, we'll address that, those issues and pick and we'll come out with recommendations.
Great, thank you. Done now.
Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On Tuesday the fifteenth, as Commissioner Mojo referred to, I attended the county planning public hearing for the gravel pit southwest of Holly. On Thursday the seventeenth, I attended the Lake Agassiz Regional Library Full Board of Directors Meeting. And on Friday, the eighteenth of September, I attended the Early Childhood Initiative part of the Clay County Collaborative. And difficulties in dealing with childcare countywide issues due to COVID-19 was discussed. Some providers have too many clients, some have little or none. Difficulties of childcare and qualifying for cares and PPP grants funding was discussed and we also received agency reports from the various providers. And that concludes my report.
Okay. Grant?
Let's see, I had the solid waste meeting last week. Kevin already talked about, we, we don't have a board meeting next Tuesday. Maybe we could reschedule that for next Tuesday morning or afterward, whatever works. So then if you want to check that, that works. And then I had a EDC board meeting and had budget discussions and talks about what their plans are for next year. And then I had a Minnesota Rural Counties Meeting and they had a couple of lengthy, they had lots of technical issues trying to get that meeting going as usual, but they had a couple of lengthy presentations from state people on how the COVID has affected, you know, the budget and the processes in Minnesota. And I don't know, I thought things were kind of, you know, not real, they've been hopeful, I guess, for the last month or so, but there's a lot of questions still remaining how things are going to end up working out financially in Minnesota with this. So that was it for me.
We had a meeting on out-of-home placement.
Did you want to talk about that?
No, you can talk about it, but I was there.
At this meeting, Jenny was present. The things we discussed there, there's a, which surprised me a little bit, we got a hundred and fifty-four children out of home placement right now. That's just a lot of children out there that we have to find homes for. Very concerned about that, you know, it's just costing us a lot of money there to, I mean, it's a lot of money I'm often getting those kids placed and stuff like that. Child protection cases have dropped this year, so that, that was good news in that part. I think the secured and unsecured, James is talking about the, O'Donnell was talking about the secured and unsecured beds. I think they're pretty well filled up, aren't they?
Yeah, they've been very busy.
Yeah. And we're talking about families that have kids in secured, not secured, they have to pay. They're, I think they're in unsecured, they have to pay. So we're looking at the fees that are, you know, that we, when I assess fees for both or if we have to adjust those fees and what. Also, I thought, there was just so much good information given at that meeting, that Ron had presented, that James O'Donnell presented, you know, some of that stuff, I know I'm supposed to report in the meeting or Jenny and I are supposed to report in the meeting, but I think some of that stuff, the citizens of the, of Clay County need to know what's going on in those agencies. And I wouldn't mind seeing reports from some of the agencies that we have. I mean, probably some of our agencies that we have don't have much to present at the time, but boy, this is one board I thought that really would have some information that our county should know about, what's happening in our county. We're. Where, where's money being spent and stuff like that? And this is a big part of our county. When you're talking of 154 kids or children in, in, in foster homes, that is just, that's a big area. And I, like I say, I wouldn't mind taking one, I don't know, it's every six months we hear from or, or just updates every once in a while, because Mr. O'Donnell and Rhonda are just full of information at that meeting. And it's just, I'd like to get that out to the county. Wednesday, at the Historical Society meeting, we had our annual meeting also in conjunction with it. There was a slight profit last year in 2019. We've got about 800 members in Historical Society, so that's good news there. They had, we're talking about all the things they did last year, so 28,000 visitors. So that's a busy place over there, so hopefully we can keep that going. Other than that, we had board elections. Mark Peel gave a presentation on free land and it's just great to listen to the guy talk, you know, he is so good on giving presentations, so interesting. So it was a very, very good meeting at Historical Society.
Do you know when Frank says that, it is a good presentation. It is.
Yes, that's true.
Yes, it is. Okay, we'll move on from there. The Buffalo Watershed Board, Jenny's already reported on that one. AMC, Thursday at AMC, where we discussed the channel government, a part of the Channel Government Committee. Some of the things that we're talking about was the assessing property, whether we can do it from the air. You know, instead of going from home to home to home, whether they can do it from the air, whether that can be, that can be worked on. Another thing they talked about was the requirements to publish, to publish the minutes and stuff like that. Do we have to put it in the newspapers or do we put it on our website? Is that sufficient? You know, so save some money there instead of putting them in the news. Sometimes they get pretty lengthy and post them in the papers and stuff like that.
Has there been a legislative decision on that?
Not to this point, there hasn't been.
I know we're talking about sales tax collection with a lot of, I think in Minnesota, we are charging if you order online, that they do collect sales tax and stuff like that, but I don't know if everything, if there is, if they're catching all of it or whatever, but we were discussing that, you know, but even the sales tax that county imposed, you know, it's just, you know, we, some of the counties already impose the half cent sales tax, like we have for the jail. Others have done it for other things, you know. If there's no money coming or whatever, I mean, are we going to look at another half cent sales tax? Where are we going to get the money from to do some of these projects if the?
We don't get bonding money and stuff like that, so.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So what you just talked about, I had a, I had a call from a, a business owner and regarding sales tax on, on watercraft, for example. If somebody comes in and buys a watercraft in Clay County, do we, does the, does the DMV collect the county tax on that if it's, if it's been purchased locally here? Even though, even if they take it to another county? And I, you know, I think it was his, it's his opinion that Clay County should get that money. And I guess I'm just not sure, I think there's been some conflicting reports with what the, what the DMV does there. So I, I just want to raise that issue to maybe have that researched.
Then we discussed a little bit of property taxes. Can we defer property taxes? You know, I don't know whether we have to go through state legislature, whatever. Because I know before the spring, we were talking about that too, but they were talking about deferring property taxes and putting a lien on the property and stuff like that. Quite a bit of discussion that needs to be done of that, but is that another option to do there, so?
Well, we did talk a little bit about that in the spring. I know we brought that up. And, and part of the major issues on that are the school referent, or the school taxes that come in and how their costs come in. I mean, it's a, it's a very, there are many layers to it, and it's tricky, so.
Yeah.
There is, like you said, more research that needs to be done.
Yeah, there's just some, some discussion was on it and different ideas. I mean, counties are just looking at, you know, if we don't get a bonding bill, what are, what are we going to do? You know, where, where are we at, you know, where are we going to get funds from and stuff, so. I guess those were my meetings. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the 15th, I attended the solid waste and, and auto home placement meeting that's been discussed. I also spoke with, I mean, with Kathy on some issues in detox. On the 16th, we had our coronavirus committee, which been, has been addressed. I also spoke with Shelley Jeffers and Renelle Fennell about our multi-purpose construction meetings and the potential impacts in the courtrooms. I think we have a good plan worked out there. That afternoon, I met with Ben Madsen, kind of shared some of what we shared in the meeting. Again, as I mentioned earlier, they're going to be starting after this board meeting today with that process. Part of that process, Darren has been removed from his office. The only space that we were able to find was over on the fourth floor in the Family Service Center. So if you're looking for Darren, his phone number is the same, but he's no longer located here in, in the HR department. And also Tim, Tim DeForge and also Mark Sloan will be, will be uprooted by this, and we're working on bringing forward some solutions for those, those staff issues. Let's see, that afternoon, we, we, a number of our committee members looked at some possible locations for the DMV. On the 17th, we talked to, we had county management, Kathy provided an update, we had CARES meeting. Talked about open enrollment in the budget process. Afternoon, I met with Georgia and Darren. I think one of the concerns that, that we've talked a little bit at our, at our CARES, our COVID committee is with our Family Service Center, in the event that our, our buildings remain locked, what's the best way to work with our, with our citizens over in the Family Service Centers? A similar issue to our, to our DMV of waiting outside. I spoke with Brandon Lunick, Superintendent of Morde Schools, on a series of shared issues afternoon. On Friday, I attended a county administrator mil, meeting. We talked about budgets and CARES, CARES issues for the most part. Yesterday, we had another coronavirus committee meeting. Again, we talked about DMV and business relief and a number of items that were on the agenda today. We've had a couple of different conversations, Commissioner Mojo was mentioning, about the absentee balloting. We have added a drop box for ballots outside the courthouse. So in the event that, to limit your need to come into, into the courthouse, if you don't have any questions, citizens can drop, drop them there. It's very clearly identified what, what that is, as Commissioner Gross had expressed concern.
Is that anchored down?
It's anchored down and is cleaned out on a daily basis, so it's a secure, secured area. Let's see, and again, as was mentioned, the blackout period at the state ended on the bond sales yesterday. So we are hopeful that legislators can get together here and, and come forward with a tax bill and a bonding bill, hopefully here within the coming days, so that concludes my report.
Do we have a PIC meeting today?
Yes, we do.
Okay, very good. Anything further? Are you thinking anymore? Okay.
Very good. For your turn.